Board of Education meeting of August 8th to order. And may we rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with communications and recognitions. Do we have an end of the table? Who would like to start? Do you have anything? Okay.
Just very quickly, I'd like to recognize our maintenance staff, our custodian staff, and our tech staff. They've been hustling is not the right word. They've been working very, very hard under Peter's direction and Chris. They've been moving teachers' boxes, supplies, furniture, hooking up the phones and computers. And I know Tim's going to go into the detail at the middle school, but they have worked incredibly hard and deserve a special thank you. So Peter, please, from all of us, just give them an extra thanks. And Chris, you too.
Thank you. I would like to add Farouk and Deb and I read, Candace was not able to slide into the slots they had available for her, but we read at the first Read-a-thon for the library, and that was a lot of fun, and we hope to do it again. We don't know how much money they raised yet. Dewey, Farouk?
I don't know the final tally. Last time I spoke to the library, it was about $1,800.
Okay, good. Thank you. It was fun. I also wanted to add, I don't know if anybody follows Tim Flanagan. He's a middle school teacher. He writes a blog and he participates in the teacher funds that they get those stipends for, and he participates, he has this blog for Alternate Route. He's the one who did the Fulbright Sabbatical a couple of years ago. This summer so far, he has gone to Duke University for a conference. He was in New York City, and he's now in Mexico. And a lot of this has to do with diversity and educating with the arts and diversity and all that. So it's really interesting. If you need a link to his blog, I'm happy to provide that to you. It's been fun to follow him. Next is comments from citizens. We'll move on to the middle school consolidation report.
But my walk-up song is... Before I get started, just to add on to Alexis' comment about Mr. Flanagan, he's one of our well-traveled middle school teachers. I think the greatest thing about Tim is in his travels, he taught himself how to be an expert photographer. The photography that goes along with his blog, The Alternate Route, is just absolutely stunning. The pictures from his Sabbatical in Vietnam were just mind-blowing. And we've parlayed that, and he's going to be teaching a photography course as one of the encores for us, so.
I think that was one of his purposes of his Cuban trip, if I remember right.
Correct. Yep. Okay. So this should be the last middle school update, because by the time we meet again, Stonington Middle School will be open. Okay. So under the heading of communications, we're scheduled for our new student orientations on the 21st for grade six and on August 23rd for seventh and eighth graders. These activities were planned and will be executed in conjunction with the Stonington High School Link Crew that does the ninth grade orientation. Anne Marie Hool and Pat McCarny have done a great job of using, since they already had to train those kids to do the high school, they're on loan to us, and we're very excited for that student orientation for all students coming to Stonington Middle School on the 3rd. The assistant principals met with the PTO today to start planning kind of a parent preview. Parents very interested in getting into the school before opening day. Then we'll finish the details on that and get that out to folks. Information on class placements and teachers is starting to go out to parents this week. The eighth grade math placement has already been communicated to parents. A draft of the proposed bus routes have already been communicated, and feedback was collected, and we're turning that all over and processing that. The new official website is up. Still needs some work, but we're up and running with that. So thanks to Chris and his guys for getting that on board. And also, we have school-branded Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter accounts that have been posting in the last few weeks, and will continue. Those will be the school accounts going forward. They're linked at the bottom of the website. Personnel update. This spring, we hired a total of six new teachers for Stonington Middle School. Three math teachers, and we're really excited about these math teachers. They all come to us with really great experience, and we really believe that they will help us drive our math program forward. We're very excited about all of our new hires, but our math hires especially. Our eighth grade language arts teacher is someone returning to the district. Christina Beckett taught here at the high school for four years a few years ago and is back from Hawaii, so we're glad to welcome her back to the district. Our new seventh grade social studies teacher, Mr. Walters, was the long-term sub last year in eighth grade. He's joining us permanently. We have a new second art teacher. Mrs. Gallo from Pawgetuck is coming over, but to run all of the art classes for students, we needed a second art teacher, so we've hired a new art teacher. Ms. Jessie Stan Tavage will be starting with us. And we're still finalizing, we need a long-term sub in eighth grade science because Mrs. Farachi had a baby a couple of weeks ago, and she'd like to stay home with that baby for a few weeks at the beginning of the school year. So that's the only loose end that we're still tying up, and we'll have that tied up this week. Update on technology. Again, I want to reiterate what Dr. Riley said about how hard people have been working, including the technology staff. The interactive whiteboards are being installed. Steve's been working on that on a daily basis in all of the core academic classrooms, including world language. We'll have all of the teacher voice amplification systems moved from the vacant classrooms in Pawgetuck, so we'll have them in addition to the ones that are already installed to Mystic. We should have a teacher's sound amplification system in every core academic classroom. As you can see in one of the pictures, they're getting ready for the fall's Chromebook distribution, and we're still working on the installation of the new security cameras, similar to what they have at the elementary school level. Going to give you a quick rundown on the facilities, and again, it's going to be a little bit of a repeat, because I think later in tonight's program, Mr. Anderson is going to present kind of a district-wide view, and a lot of what happened district-wide happened at the middle school. So some repeat, but it bears repeating. And again, I couldn't agree with Dr. Riley more. The job that Peter and his staff has done getting us at the middle school ready has been invaluable. It really has been very impressive. So just a quick list of things at Stonington Middle School that have either already been completed or virtually complete. We've done a complete gym remodel. We're almost at the point where we're going to put the bleachers back and finish it up. That's about the only thing left to be done is the wall pads on either end and putting the bleachers back. All hallways have been repainted. All hallway doors and door frames have been repainted in the new school colors, blue and gold. The cafeteria was completely repainted. We're anticipating the receipt of all new cafeteria seating by the middle of next week. We had to create some new spaces in the school by dividing some rooms into two separate spaces. Our school-based health center was one of those things right across the hall from the nurse's office. That continues to move along and will be complete for the opening of school. Downstairs on the ground level, we took a large classroom that was not used very much in the past at Mystic, divided it into two full-size classrooms for world language with French on one side and Spanish on the other. We have a couple of donations. We have a new water bottle filling station, similar to the one they have here at the high school, that was donated from the Mystic eighth grade class that had some money left over from their eighth grade party and purchased that. So that's going to be installed, retrofitted around one of the drinking fountains in the hallway. It's in, it just hasn't been installed yet. Both PTOs from Pawgetuck Middle School and Mystic Middle School contributed to buy a new trophy case for the front lobby that is more substantial and modern-looking and really nice. One of the things that Peter and his guys have been working on is on the grounds, there were a number of trees that were close to the building and around the back in the science and at the front of the building that had been allowed to overgrow, and a lot of it had actually grown over the roof and was causing, with the leaves and whatnot, some of our roof problems with the roof not draining right because of so much leaf and debris. So we've cleared a lot of that stuff out and gotten all of the growth around the building. Landscaping to kind of clean up the front entrance of the school will start Wednesday next week. We also, as Peter will go into, we're still waiting on our new sign installation, both at the street sign and on top of the building, but that should happen shortly. So if you'll indulge me for just two more minutes, I know I don't like to go too long on this, but I have a quick little video for you that I actually have to go over there and click on. It really came out super-nice. All right. Questions? Comments?
I have a question about, you had mentioned, or I read somewhere, that there would be a new process for bus drop-off.
Correct.
How will that work, that it will be so much better than it has been in the past?
I love your optimism. We're working out some details. Right now, we've got the parking lot being resurfaced and repainted with the lines. What we want to do is move all of the bus traffic, the way the parking lot was originally signed and intended to be used, all bus traffic up top at the school and all parent drop-off in that middle circle to the science door. And we'll staff that science door for AM drop-off so that we can cap two separate things. And in the afternoon, we'll actually allow the parents to pick up and go in that circle while the buses load, because they'll be on the other end of the parking lot. And then we'll just stop that line of traffic while the buses, when they're all ready to roll, the buses will roll, we'll stop the parent pickup, and then resume it. So we think that will clear up a lot of the problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Morehouse, you had a question?
It was perhaps the most frustrating part of being a parent in Mystic Middle School is picking up your child at the end of the day.
I've heard that, yeah.
The line was down, down the hill, approaching Hewitt Road sometimes. So it sounds like you're figuring it out, but...
Well, one of the things that we're, we still have to get some blessings from public safety is that we have room in between the lines of parked cars in the staff parking lot to actually run two lines of cars and then be able to pull them up and do pickup. There's a sidewalk from that science exit all the way down to Mistuxit, and we'll start the first pickup right there so that we can kind of alleviate that. And to me, to be able to allow those first parents in line and hopefully a good portion of them to keep rolling up, and it will keep students from having to cross into the parking lot like they have been either to get to cars or buses. They come out the science wing and they stay on the sidewalk and then just hold the cars for a couple of minutes while the buses roll. So I'm hoping it will be better.
And then another question is, do all the teachers have their own classroom, or are they having to share?
Most of the teachers, there's a couple of special ed, special programs that are sharing some spaces. All of the core content world language teachers have their own classroom. The one caveat on that, Mr. Morehouse, is that there are some classrooms that will be in use during one of their planned periods, but as far as they're teaching in their own room, all the core content world language teachers have that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
All right.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
I move we accept the consent agenda. I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the second read for approval, the curriculums. Now, for those, do we need to do those each one at a time, not as a group, correct? If we're going to approve?
A group is fine.
Okay. Do we have any other questions on those curriculums? Yes?
I just had one question on the music technology. Maybe I didn't see it when I was looking through, but I didn't notice anything about learning to create electronic music. Is that, or maybe that's probably a different cause?
Mary Ann, are you able to answer that?
I didn't hear the last part of the question.
Creating electronic music or synthesizer or apps or things like that? Is there a network? Is there a...
It uses the GarageBand program, and you can import keyboard music that they have attached to the computers, or you can download and incorporate any sounds that they can find on the internet and create more electronic beat-type stuff.
And Craig, just so you know, Craig, that they'll leave vertical meetings with the music teachers this year so that there'll be communication about what that looks like at the middle school encore level as opposed to the high school level so that they can have a growth plan on what the kids are going to be able to do.
Were there other questions on the curriculum? If not, and if it is fine, then we need a motion to approve the curriculum. If we want more information, then we need to request that as well.
Do we say three times separately?
We can do it together.
I move we approve the three curriculums listed in high school with the music technology and the...
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We're all approved of the three curriculums as listed. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools.
Yes. You will hear about the middle school, and Peter will be making the presentation in a moment. But I would like to, again, thank our maintenance and custodial staff and technology staff. The AAA program, that's Allison's amazing annex. They moved, they're out of the central office, and that room has been painted and the files are done. It's just a beautiful, beautiful office area, and all the classrooms are now ready to be, and they'll be set up in the next couple of weeks, and it's really, really quite amazing what's happened there. So thanks to everyone for that. And certainly, if any board member would like to come take a look at that, give me a call and be happy to give you a tour. I would like to mention, last night at the board of finance, the middle school roof was approved for us to move forward with that. That roof at Stonington Middle School is old, and it was really nice to hear that the board of finance supports us moving forward with the planning. They're also allowing us to include the air conditioning, the future air conditioning curbs and things that will be needed for that. So Peter will be working with the architect to have all those plans done and approved at the latest, I think, with November, so then we can go to bid in the spring and have it, have a brand-new roof on the school next summer. Tim mentioned the new art teacher. The last two teachers are on, you just approved, the personnel report. We're very pleased with the art teacher and our new elementary instrumental music teacher. We had to go through a few applicants on that, but we have an amazing person, and we're looking forward to having that new program in our elementary schools. And... Let's see if there was that one other thing about... Oh, the board of finance also, last night, said that they will be returning $145,000 to the district based on the ECS formula. So what we'll do there is our administrators, Gary and I and others, will look at the best, that's a general fund, return of funds and how best we could use those funds. We'll bring that to our finance committee at the next meeting and then bring it back to the board as to how those funds should be placed in our operating budget. And now I'd like to turn this over to Peter, who will discuss some of the projects that we have going.
Thank you. Good evening. What we've got is a, let me get this... We've got a really kind of brief synopsis of what we've done all summer long. The three pictures that you're looking at here are, this is the, obviously, the stingray is the new floor in the Mystic Middle School. Over here is Dean's Mill flooring, and here's Dean's Mill. We also, we also have a new finish that you're going to see here in a minute. Hopefully, it comes through well on the slides. This is the new outside sign for the Stonington Middle School. It's the top one. We were able to salvage the middle school, and we were able to replicate as close as we could with new cast aluminum letters, the Stonington sign, and we have the stingray up there as the balance. It's not at prison, but it is a school. This is the, this is the new health center. It doesn't look like this now. Right now, the doors and sheet rock are on. We're ready, it's just a matter of paint and a few little trim pieces, and we're ready to open that building up, or that room up. This is one of my favorite projects. This was the drainage issue that was at Mystic Middle School, or Stonington Middle School. We went down, I don't know if you can see this gentleman's hard hat here. We were scheduled to go down only five feet, and it was only supposed to be in the parking lot. The contractor felt it would be a better job if you went up the hill. We're down eight feet, and we went 125 feet with a curtain drain. We've been flowing water out of that hill since it was completed, and we're putting out about 2,200 gallons every day. It's been non-stop. So there...
Where are you going?
It's going, it's, we had them core it right into the Catch Basin, so it's going to Catch Basin, so it's just groundwater going to Catch Basin, and it's on its way. But it's, it's absolutely...
I have some water in my basement.
Yeah, it's incredible how much water we hit, and it's all on its way out. So that's a good thing. This is the new gym. All three different pictures of it. You can see we did a two-tone design. There's the stingray in the center and the stingray logo. This is, this really came out great. The two-tone design was a really good option that we got onto. Here's Dean's Mill School. We are, this is the front of the building. I don't know if you've known that we did get the sign up and on, so there's the proof that it's there. Here's the Dean's Mill School. This is a new finish that we're using on the floor, and we have that at both Dean's Mill and West Vine, and our Code Red buttons are all done and ready to go. Hopefully, we never have to use them. This is another shot of the luster of the floor. You can see that this is a three-coat finish. There's so many solids in this finish that we don't have to do the normal four coats. We actually save a coat. This is a finish specifically designed for schools. This is a view from the roof today at the new front end of Dean's Mill. We're all the turnarounds out. If you can look, you can see actually all, the sidewalks are being in. There's sidewalks here, here, and that one right there is fresh, so that one was just This is the new admin furniture in the front section of the Dean's Mill office. We're almost there. Here's the, these are, this is the new safety gate, a rail to prevent kids from shooting across to the other side of the parking lot where the buses will be coming in. So this is a, it's a nice added safety feature for the back of Dean's Mill. Our guys have done a really, really nice job. This is one of, is the typical classroom right now at Dean's Mill. These are all up and ready. We're ready for kids right now, and we've been ready for a while. They've done a phenomenal job. West Vine, that's today. Nice shot. Here's a good example of the new finish that we're also using on the floors. Over here is West Vine, and this one is Dean's Mill. And for those of you that may have been involved with some of this decision, that is the second floor renovated B-wing where we had the green paint. And if you notice, we've got the color change. That's our beige paint up there. Here's what a couple of days can do. You can see all the rain from where we were at the bus circle here, and this is all paved out. This was today. And this is the back area going back to the playground behind West Vine Street. And this is the learning annex. If you haven't seen it, it's really quite a nice thing. We've converted this entire library into a functional office and learning area. It's really sharp, and this was all, this was all done in-house. We had nothing, no one has, everybody that was involved with this was Stonington staff. And that's it.
Wow. Peter, I don't know if you had any idea what you were in for when we hired you last year, but you have been very busy. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all your efforts. And I don't know also if maybe we want to extend an invitation to our board of finance members for a tour of the learning annex, because that was something that they really thought long and hard about us following up or procuring, so I think maybe that would be a nice gesture for them. Okay, that's fine.
Maybe in a couple of weeks.
We'll keep it on our radar, though. Thank you.
I have a question for Peter.
Yes.
Peter, that drain at Stonington Middle School, is there a maintenance program scheduled for it?
For the drain?
Yeah.
Actually, the contractor included a clean-out. It's at the top of the hill, so we have access on both ends of the drain.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Peter? Thank you so much. The pictures were wonderful. Next, monthly reports. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one question on finance. If we're in a hurry, so many, many more years to get left to pay down the sick fines.
fines. Was it at the end of the year?
Let us get back to you with that, because we've been putting at least 60,000 a year. Some years we were at 150,000 this last year when we had all the retirees. That could have taken a big chunk out, but Gary took the payoff for those folks out of last year's ending balance, so that was something that would have been a liability, and that's down. So we'll get that back to you.
Peter, I just wanted to tell you, I love your reports. They're so simple to read, and there's clearly a time going on. Even six months ago, there was always something, but it's, they're very helpful. Very, thanks.
On to the committee reports. Does anyone have any details to add for the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting? I do have an update on the Health Insurance Reserve Fund Committee. We've met twice since our last meeting here. Significant progress has been made. We're actually very, very excited. Our meeting, I'm losing track of my days, yesterday or the day before, was only 45 minutes long, and it was very efficient. We were able to come together on some details. We have Gary and Jim Sullivan and Vince Pasalia working to finalize some of those financial details for us, and then we can review that MOU in the Subcommittee, and then we'll be able to bring that forward to our boards, and then we're looking forward to meeting our three boards together to then finalize that agreement. I do have just a little bit of details, just to give you some highlights from that. I had met with George Sylvester, who was the person who originated the details of that original agreement, and also worked in the town for a very long time. It helped give some insight on how they could have bankrupted the fund back in 95 and the cause for some extreme concern by many members like the Board of Finance. And basically, they weren't funding it. They weren't putting that 120% plus the 5% into the fund, so if you do that, you're going to run out of money. So, and the agreement, as much as we've looked at it, and there can be a little misinterpreted because it seemed like it was vague, as George explained, that agreement took about two years to get put together, and he would bring it to all the boards, and by the time they were done with it, had really watered it down. So we use that as a great stepping off point, and then all agree that we need the details in there so that when we are all not here anymore, everybody knows the intention of the agreement, the intention of funding and all the details. So we've learned from George and are able to go forward from there. And also, one other tidbit we've added in there is that it will be reviewed every couple of years, so you're not looking at it once every 20 years. So that way, it helps keep all the information current. Any other questions on that? I won't get into the muck or the details. And Communications Committee, there isn't a report on here, but we do have somebody here tonight who was also here at our last meeting, Frank Fulcherio from SEC TV. They're trying to increase access to Stonington education and government, and so some conversations with him, and agreed that we'll bring some information to the Communications Committee and then discuss that, and then have, sit down and have some discussions as far as some details with Frank, and as far as maybe getting some of our activities and events Any other comments on the Policy Subcommittee or Teaching and Learning? Any questions? Okay. Building Committee update? Lots going on.
Lots going on. So we had a Building Committee meeting this Tuesday night, and we met again this morning, and things are definitely moving along. It's coming down to the line. West Vine, both at West Vine and Dean's Mill, they're still working on the punch list, but they have told us they're much smaller, maybe about 12 items. They are still trying to deal with the kitchen exhaust makeup air system, re-engineering that and/or trying to work out the controls. That's, again, still ongoing. It's getting close, but at West Vine, they are still working on small amounts of the landscaping, but it's almost ready to turn over the Area A, the first part, to the district. The sensory garden still needs some additional work, and we're going to be reaching out to the town to see if we can potentially get some help in paving the walkways to make them more handicap accessible. At Dean's Mill, they are getting ready to do some final paving in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully they will be coordinating and communicating with the school and not just showing up. Probably the biggest thing is we are going to have two open houses and ribbon cuttings in September on Saturday, September 21st, and Saturday, September 28th. These are going to be opportunities for the public, not just parents with kids that might be at the open, the school back-to-school nights, to come in and see the schools and have a, you know, a tour of some select areas, some typical classrooms, gym, cafeteria. So we're planning those right now. Right now, they're planned to be from 10:00 to 11:30, both of those Saturday mornings, one at Dean's Mill, one at West Vine, and invitations will come out to all of you, and there'll be more information in the newspaper. Any questions on anything that's going on?
Is there any way that former students or college students can get into the buildings before they head back to school this fall?
Potentially. I mean, I can't speak on that, but maybe Dr. Riley or Peter or someone, if they're over there, you know, maybe there's a way to, or Jen, whoever's. I know that we don't have anything planned right now for the Building Committee to be walking through, but maybe.
There's still a lot going on. I think the best, probably the best thing to do is to invite them to these, to these open houses in September, and then if they can't, if they're gone, when they come back, then we'll be complete. We won't have, or I mean, you saw, we have.
Right.
Paving and tractors and everything else going on. We can't even get into the building sometimes, so it.
No, that makes sense. I'm just thinking maybe, and this can be for a future communications or something agenda, but maybe we could offer something in January.
Sure.
Or December, when they're home for a longer time, the school's still open.
Sure.
So then it's a way to pull people back in and let them see.
New Year's Eve.
Definitely.
Maybe we could have a video tour put online.
Oh, that's a good idea. So maybe even when we do our open house, if we film it and then put it online for people to look at. That's a good idea.
Tim, can I add the music?
Do we have any comments from citizens relative to board action on this agenda? Items for future agendas?
There's an organization called Wait Till Eight, and I don't know if you've heard about them, but the whole premise in their mission statement is around cellphone use among young people. And in order for it to work, it really has to be like a school-wide, system-wide thing. Essentially, my understanding is that parents take a pledge to not give their kids a cellphone with data, with a data plan. They can have cellphones until the eighth grade, and it eliminates a lot of things, potential bullying, you know, they're not obsessed with likes on Snapchat or whatever. I don't even know what Snapchat, I hear about it. Instagram, but they're not obsessed with their phones. I mean, I can tell you, I just, today, I hire high school kids. They're wonderful, but it, I've just relinquished, they're in their, they're on their phones all the time. It's like they can't, they can't survive without their phones. And I know that's a whole nother story, but I really think that if kids started later, it might help, and it also would help, you know, just on many levels. So I thought if it's something that we could get behind, that it would be, we really would be helping out a lot of students along the way, I think, maybe getting their heads out of their phone and focusing on other things. So I don't know what everyone else feels about that, but.
I think it's a great idea. Is there someone who would come and do a presentation on it, or?
I am happy to reach out. I just, I heard about it on a podcast.
Sure.
And I just Googled, you know, what their mission statement and that kind of thing, but I haven't gone any further than that, so.
Okay. That's a great idea. Oh, yeah. What do you think of bringing it to Teaching and Learning Committee?
All right.
And then we can.
Okay.
Careful, how's that sound?
Okay.
I also think that that ties in with, I think that the retreat, we're going to talk about the climate surveys. Yes, correct? No? You seem very, yes. Okay. But it ties in with, there was a question about whether parents want more information about technology, so that would be a good address. But I don't, but then, that program sounds fantastic, but my reflexes to say, and we, I know we said policy, but my reflexes to say, that sounds like something that we shouldn't ask the middle school team, including like the social workers, you know, who might be doing other, might be doing other initiatives, just to see what's going on. It doesn't sound like there's anything going on, but I just don't know that that's something that the board just thinks on, on our own.
Right. Which would be great if we brought it to Teaching and Learning, then we would, would know that because they could be invited as well.
I know we don't get into microbeads, things, bullying, but it needs to be a system-wide thing. It needs to go across every school, and if it comes from the top, I feel like it would happen. Just if your parents don't do it, it doesn't work. So it needs to be, if folks don't want to do it, I understand. I just thought it was something that needs to be. I'd be proud of it.
Sure. I think it's something great to look into and then maybe see how we, how it gets carried out from there. I will be setting the agenda for the Board Goal Meeting on August 21st. I hate to call it a retreat because I don't really view it as a true retreat, but so we will be, I think the format we had last year worked, whereas we met, had some grinders or salads, started our discussions, and then we, at that time, we had Mary Ann and Van there and helped work through our goals because then they heard what we wanted, and then were able to develop their goals and apply them to the current district goals from there with us all interpreting it as intended. And then from there, they were able to leave, and then we were able to continue our discussions. So I think everyone was happy at the end of that evening. We served two purposes at once, so I think that that would be, it worked well. Okay. Yep. And after our meeting on Monday, Mrs. Vannett and then Dr. Riley were able to speak to our Title IX attorney, and we are able to begin the process of discussing some items in regards to the Title IX issues, and so we will be able to have them present those at the, on the 21st as well, so we can get started on some of those concerns, how we bring the students in, how we include them in this process, and discuss changes and upgrades and all of that. So we can start, we are able to start that process, which will be fabulous. Go ahead. Did you, oh, I thought you were, I thought you were moving your mic to talk. Are there any board comments or concerns? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.